Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, July 27th, and this is the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting, which I'd like to call the order. Please stand if you are able and join us in stating the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
It's been moved and seconded.
Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Now's the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Is there anyone here in the meeting room or online that would like to make comments on today's agenda? And I am not seeing anyone, so we will close public comment number one. Next, we'll move on to agency reports. We've got the Juvenile Court Annual Report. I'm not sure if Jerome is online. Not seeing him. Well, we can review and reach out to him if we have any questions or if he comes online, we can circle back to him. Otherwise, we'll move on to Anna Magnuson with her report with the Iowa ABLE. And if you want to, please come up to the table here. It helps with the owl to pick up. Good morning, Anna.
Good morning. Well, first, I just want to thank you so much. This is my third meeting here being at ABLE of Iowa. So it means I've been in Story County for three years. So it's hard to believe, and time flies when you're having fun. Thank you each for all the work that you do in Story County and our organization. So a lot of changes have happened since 2018 when I started. And in the report, I showed that our board adopted a strategic plan in 2019, and then we implemented the strategic plan in 2020 during the time of a pandemic. Perfect timing to be able to just do everything, which included launching the pilot programs and launching our new branding and name. So we just ripped off the Band-Aid and just did it all at once during the pandemic. The good thing is that with the pilot programs that we launched, in spite of the pandemic, we were able to really help Iowans and people in Story County. So in 2018, we received a total of 88 applications. In 20, I'm sorry, 2019, 88 applications. In 2020, we received 173 applications. And 2021, we just put in our 304th application yesterday. So that is partly because of the pilot programs, so we were able to expand our loan options. But the biggest obstacle we had when I first started was the interest rate. So our interest rate was fixed and moved with the prime. But because of the pilot programs, we now have a sliding scale interest rate. So the greater the need, the lower the interest rate. So our interest rates now fall between 0 and 9%. If an individual qualifies for a 9% interest rate, if they participate in our financial empowerment program and they meet the plan that they create, they can earn a 5% interest rate reduction after three months, which lowers their interest rate and their payments significantly and incentivizes breaking that cycle of poverty because they're participating in a plan that they create for themselves. So the story I always say when people call me about the financial empowerment program, because in many ways, when you say, well, you can participate. If I say financial education program, they definitely don't want to talk. Empowerment's a little bit better. And then when I say, so, for example, if a CFO gets into a car accident and sustains a car accident, she doesn't need to know what a spending plan is. But she might need to know how to navigate through the system to access her disability benefits. So we can create a plan that helps her be able to understand how to get her disability benefits, and that meets the requirements for that interest rate. So it really is personalized based on the individual's needs, which I'm really excited about. So that's helped. And also expanding the loan options. So for example, a vehicle purchase, a modified vehicle purchase is great. But if they can't repair the vehicle, there's no point in having that vehicle. So we've expanded those loan options to be able to help Iowans with disabilities be able to achieve and maintain independence. So that's been helpful. And then the new name change has been helpful, too, because Arvane got confused with the Iowa ABLE accounts. So we would get 40 minutes into a conversation to realize they wanted to open up an Iowa ABLE account. So Meeks, which is a branding company out of West Des Moines, gave us an in-kind donation to be able to help us rebrand, still honoring the past but moving us forward. So it's helpful, but I still will say we still get calls asking to open up the Iowa ABLE accounts. But the other thing is during 2020, even though we couldn't travel to go and meet with our community partners, we now have a weekly meeting with the Iowa ABLE account staff because we can look at ways that we can collaborate together. And so that's what we've been doing in 2020, as well as reaching out through Zoom, just like everybody else, to be able to figure out how do we strengthen those partnerships. And within our own building, too, with Friendship Arc in Arc of Story County, being able to figure out where are the ways that we don't have to duplicate effort be able to work together. So that's been really great, too. In your packets, I have the guidebook, which is what we give to our community partners to explain our program and the new application. So even though our name change is ABLE of Iowa, our 501(c)(3) still is Iowa ABLE Foundation. And until, I'm absolutely confident that all of our legal documents that we can move that over, everything still has Iowa ABLE Foundation. Now, you guys will be the first to know, too, that we passed our bank examination. Because we are a regulated lender, we have to go through a whole examination every year. And they audit all of our files and be able to give us our lending license. So with the new pilot programs and the name change, I'm not going to lie, I've been really stressed out. But I'm happy to report, I just paid for our renewal of our license. So I will say, he picked out the 10 most complicated loans to examine, but that's all right. So the worst is behind us. I'm like, not that one! But I'm really happy to report that we really are, we're still working progress because the pilot programs just launched last year. There's still tweaking that needs to be done and strengthening those partnerships in Story County as well to make sure that we are being a good community partner. So that's my report.
Thank you. Questions?
Could you give a quick summary of where your funds come from that you loan out?
Yeah, it's a great question. So some of that is the interest rate that generates from our loans. But that is not enough to be able to sustain operations. Last year as well, we were one in four in the country to receive a federal grant in the amount of $350,000. $273,000 of that was designated specifically for lending. So that really helped us be able to launch our pilot programs. And the remainder of that was for operations, including our new website.
How much was your loan?
$273,000.
You said one in four?
One in four in the country. That received that grant, yes. So that really helped us because it was right during the timing. And I think the reason why our application was approved was because we were launching those pilot programs. Then we also received some corporate support, of course, asset. So I would be remiss if I didn't say asset supports us as well. And then some individual donors.
Is that federal grant, is that just one year?
It's one year. We can apply again, but the chances of us getting that and renew, getting that are probably pretty slim. But looking at other funding partners as well. But that really helped us, moved us forward.
Is there anything in these materials that gives those numbers or maybe a pie chart that shows what percentage of your?
No, but I can give that to you.
Yeah, I'd be kind of interested in seeing that. I mean, this is a good packet for some, you know, just in the program. But just from my perspective, I'd like to see a little more of the financials.
Yes.
Just to be interested.
What is, I assume maybe it's on an individual basis, but what is kind of your average when you do a loan for repayment? Is it, you know, two years, five years?
It varies on the type of loan. So each loan type has the maximum number of years that will extend the loan. But really, in general, the maximum amount we'll loan out was five years. The maximum amount that we'll loan out is $25,000, the minimum is $500. So you might also just anticipate a question as far as what is our delinquency rate? So I just reported that. So of the 71 loans that we have, one is actually charged off. They have not been able to pay the loan back. Three of them are delinquent, but they're making regular payments. So our delinquency rate overall covers between 5 and 8%, depending on the year. But I mean, it's sort of like habitat, though, because we're the bank. So we can extend the life of that loan, we can extend payment holidays, and we work with each of our applicants as much as we can to be able to understand what's happening because they have some pretty tough circumstances sometimes that makes it difficult for them to pay their loans back.
Any additional question?
Does someone have to be receiving disability benefits or what type of documentation does someone have to qualify?
They don't have to have medical documentation, but when we look at their income, we do look at SSDI and SSI.
They have to be?
Now, the only loan that you don't have to have a disability, which the board approved, is the Credit Builder Loan. So that helps build or repair credit. That's open to all Iowans.
Anything else? Not seeing any other questions.
Okay, no, it's all right. I know a family who, the father has muscular dystrophy, the daughter has muscular dystrophy. The father has not been able to qualify for any kind of benefits because, but right now, they make too much. But, you know, because it's degenerative, he's getting worse. The daughter is much worse than the dad, but not really even bad yet. So they're kind of in that in-between space where they know they're going to be needing modifications to their home, a wheelchair, like he was denied funding for a wheelchair through insurance. It's just ridiculousness. But they're good, they need all these things, and they're trying to figure out how to juggle that. Is that someone who could come and talk to you even though they're not receiving any of those benefits yet?
Yes, absolutely. So the thing that I should have said, too, is our Financial Empowerment Director, Loretta Plander, retired from both rehab. So what she's great about is finding additional resources. And the other thing is that even though I said, yes, they have to have SSI or SDI, or SSI, all those S's, that we can work with them. And the other thing I should have said is we now offer a forgivable loan of up to $3,000 only for assistive technology. So if they qualify, they can get a forgivable loan. The way they earn their payments is they have to participate in the financial empowerment program for the entire length of the loan. Yes, but absolutely.
Okay, I will direct it to you. Your agency, thank you.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm just going to take a check back to see if someone from Juvenile Court is online and if so, they could unmute themselves. It doesn't look like, no, that's all right. I just wanted to follow up and check. Okay, we'll move on to consideration of minutes. We have the July 13th and the July 20th minutes that were sent to us.
I would move approval of both sets in advance.
Second. Then moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Next, we'll consideration of personnel actions. Move approval of personnel actions.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Consent agenda, is anyone pulling anything from consent today? No, okay.
Move approval of items listed on the consent agenda.
Been moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Now we're down to number 10. We do not have any public hearing items, so we're on to additional items. And our first up is Lisa Markley for consideration of sending FY '22 budget amendment to publication for public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As I said last week, I'd be coming to you with a budget amendment, and here I am. So I broke it out by department for you, for expenses and revenues. Also, the actual publication that I would notice a public hearing that I will send is attached to your documents. Obviously, the big motivating factor here is ARCA funds on the revenue and expense side, okay? So let me know what I can do to help you or if you have any questions or if you're on your way to the public hearing on July, or on August 17th, excuse me. This is to send it to publication. If there's any additional items that you think should be in here, I need to know before I send it to publication.
Where did you list the ARCA funds or did you put it into the different?
It's mainly on page, it's a separate fund. You guys made a separate fund for it, okay? The expenses are listed on page, second page of the expenses, and they are $8.4 million worth of.
I had the wrong attachment up, so.
This is second attachment again?
Yeah. Yeah, it's the second attachment. That's five pages long, and it's on the second page, so.
Right.
I see it there.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
So one of the things that we don't know is where those funds are going to be specifically spent. So what I tried to do was distribute them between different service areas so that they're there. We can specify where we're spending them as we go forward, but at least they're budgeted in a service area, okay?
And we can later, if something comes up, do another amendment?
Correct, oh, absolutely.
Okay, and I would look at broadband as an example.
Well, I put upon discussion at our last meeting last Tuesday, I put $3 million in county environment needs, which is where the broadband would fall.
Okay, then the consulting fees, okay, I got it. Thank you.
So I'll be back. Oh, and the discussion you're going to have here in the next couple of items is the $200,000, $200,000, I did put that in countywide under rent utility assistance and then out of the general fund. I did not put it in payer funds at this point.
But as we discuss, if the final treasury guidelines are clear, that we can utilize that and do a correction, so to speak.
Correct, we can move that, right.
Okay.
So I will send this to publication for an August 17th public hearing.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Nope. Oh, well.
It's on there as consideration.
It's on there as consideration.
Discussion is on as consideration, so I thought I asked that. So we'd need a motion to consider sending the FY '22 budget amendment to publication for an August 17, '21 public hearing.
I will move that.
It's been moved and seconded, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Next up is discussion and consideration of asset funder priorities.
Morning, Board.
Good morning.
Morning, Sandra.
So what I have before you this morning is asset funder priorities. And this is to give volunteers guidance when they're making allocations during the budget allocation process. So what I'm asking you to do today is, well, provide some clarity on the one that I have highlighted. Also, to rank the priorities, ensure they're in the rank order that you would like them to be considered. Approve the priorities. And also to revisit the policy of not funding agencies that provide rent utility. Currently, I always advise the volunteers that the county does not fund agencies that provide rent utilities because we already have the GA, General Assistance through Community Services. However, during this period where we're dealing with a pandemic, I think the board may want to consider revisiting that.
Okay, so when you're looking at the highlighted areas, I want to go back first. Is your, can you clarify, is that just a new area that you're wanting to put in? You're wanting more information or guidance from us? I'm just a little unclear.
More guidance from the board. These are actually old. They've been used for a number of years, all of the priorities. And I just don't have any personal background on why it was worded in that way. So the first one, for example, services and supports allowing people to remain in their homes. I think that it means that they can remain housed, you know, not be homeless if they are at risk of being homeless. However, with it being down so far in the priority area, I'm not sure why it's down so far because I think that's a real priority. So we could change it to remain housed rather than remain in their homes and just move it up. The education and awareness, there are a variety of topics that agencies may request funding to provide some type of education. So we could do something as simple as putting in, you know, specify that it's going to be a variety of topics, and the board would be open to that depending on what the topic is, or we could provide some examples.
I know that the Arc of Story County, now they used to get state money for a program that was called Children at Home, and it was to help children with special needs reside, stay in their homes so parents didn't have to place them because they needed certain accommodations. I don't recall, because it's been so long, if they also received, like, county funding or asset funding that also went in to help support that program. I'm just trying to think, that may have been one why it was written that way if it was part of that program. But I don't remember if they also got additional funding besides state funding, too.
Yeah, and I'm not sure either. Like I said, I didn't really have any history on why it was worded that way. And I don't think that Arc of Story County is currently being funded by the county right now.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm not sure.
Would it also have been, like, permanent supportive housing similar to what the bridge is doing? Is that what?
It could be, however, if that was what it was, I would think you'd want it moved up farther, you know, in the priority list.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'd look at it, too. Are we looking at these three areas as, are they ranked? I guess they are, as I'm reading this, they are ranked in a priority order?
So the list that we've been using in the past, this list, those three are ranked, but the bulleted items are not ranked.
Are ranked, gotcha.
But the volunteers want those ranked as well.
Gotcha. I, you know, I don't know if you, I don't know.
I am sorry. I wanted to go back and look at most recent community needs assessment, but we had a meeting run way late last night, and I didn't get a chance to do it. And I feel like I'd be a little better prepared for discussion if I had had that time. And I'm searching right now for it, see if I can.
I can tell you what those top needs are.
Why don't you do that? That might be helpful.
Okay, so mental health services, which the county does not fund, food security, housing, childcare, suicide prevention. And I have reached out to Ethan to see if suicide prevention should be kind of linked with mental health services in terms of funding. And then income is the sixth one.
Can you show that one more time?
Top six. Mental health, food security, housing, childcare, suicide prevention, and income. And so the way that the funder priorities are currently worded, there is a strong focus on basic needs. And whenever the volunteers have asked for guidance, additional guidance from me, I have always said that the county strongly supports basic needs. And when I provide information on where distributing the funding between those three different focus areas, health, financial stability, and education, I always put enough funding to fully fund the requests in health and financial stability first before education.
So six you gave us, are those in order, are those ranked in order?
Yes.
Okay. So mental health services goes through CS, and that's our separate, obviously, that doesn't. What I get confused with this one is something I always have, is that housing is a bullet under basic needs, and housing, remaining in homes, under self-sufficiency. And that, to me, seems kind of.
Redundant.
Redundant.
Very redundant and kind of confusing. Food security, housing, childcare, suicide prevention, and income would be the list, if you take out health, in that order.
I'm kind of wondering if it's because of services and supports to help people remain in their home, is it like you need utility support, you know? You've got above your affordable, quality housing. Well, if you don't have electricity or you don't have water, you know, is that what they were referring to? And for me, I would think that it almost becomes that basic needs. And is it something where you can expand upon under affordable, quality housing?
Right, I mean, I think it could also be like senior services or the agencies that go in and.
Or do you leave that, services and supports, allowing people to remain in their homes, and put like in parentheses, like, although that would be. But I think as Sandra was saying, that generally would fall under general assistance to be for folks to go for utilities and.
I'm not led into this list being done in this way at all. Maybe some thought was put into it, but I look at it, and I'm just thinking, if we have a new needs assessment that says what people's needs are right now, maybe why not just go with that and go with four basic priorities? You said you had a question to Ethan on suicide prevention, whether that would fall under mental health or could be elsewhere. It's really not in our list, but access to mental health services, we haven't accessed all those services. But I'm thinking right now, maybe just to go with food security, housing, childcare, and income, and say those are our top priorities, rank that way, which is what the needs assessment said, and you take out the mental health issues. If you want to leave suicide prevention in, that would be fine. I know there's a huge rise in suicide mental health, and I know not all suicide prevention is done through the mental health funding, so we could leave it in. Just wanted to do a list to find in order of priority.
So, sorry, thank you on what you're kind of looking at.
Just taking what came out of the community needs assessment.
Right.
And say our first priority would take out mental health. Our first priority is food security. Second, housing. Three, childcare. Four, suicide prevention. Five, income. And the income, what, how was that, how was that categorized?
I think a number of things would fall under income. Support for childcare, transportation, food. It really crosses all of them.
It does.
And the fact that it's down so low is because it's been hit in some of those other areas.
Does it include workforce training, jobs, you know, getting training so people have?
It could if you want it to. It's very broad, so there would have to be some additional direction for what it can be used.
And are you thinking of those five, are you thinking of those bulleted areas under basic needs? basic needs? Because I know you also.
Maybe.
Because you also look at this, if I would correct Sandra, when you're making determinations for funding assets, agencies. So if we take out some of these bulleted areas, that would drop off as being a area that kind of looks like the county would want to support. So for example, like if we drop off like legal assistance and you looked at it, oh, that's no longer there, it kind of looked like the county doesn't support funding legal assistance. Or same with access to medical, dental, or mental health, substance abuse.
I think that's a good idea. We could put these under basic needs. And I would put income. Services promoting self-sufficiency, we could add income under that in terms of job training. I'm not getting the right words, but it seems like we want people to have stable incomes, you know, not to, you know, help them work out of the system. And what that comes into is job training.
So upgrading skills.
Upgrading skills in order, yeah, upgrading employment skills. How about that?
I would also kind of put that under there, kind of goes along with not only upgrading your employment skills, along those with income, but just balancing the funds that you have as well. Just kind, I think that falls kind of under that education portion as well.
Financial management, budget counseling.
Yeah, financial management or.
So here's.
Financial management, financial literacy, whichever you want.
Which literacy probably is.
So are you looking at, I guess my, for my clarity, of keeping what's under number one the same, under number two the same, and just clarifying number three?
I would reorder the ones under number one because food security was highest on the list.
On the list.
Best. I would put food security first and we put housing second. Then childcare third. And I would put suicide prevention under number two, safety and wellbeing needs. And then I would put, and then we talked about income, I think that would go under employment, we talked about employment skills, upgrading employment skills and financial literacy, I would add those under self-sufficiency.
So eliminate services and supports allowing people to remain in their home under three since we're addressing housing or do we, or expand housing a little?
I guess my question is, are we, are we cutting, are we inadvertently potentially cutting folks out by eliminating that one? Or is that not one that you've generally gone to because it's unclear and you looked at more at like under housing, under the first bullet?
I think if you support it, you probably want to leave it on here because that will add more clarity. Reordering them, of course, will let them know this is the priority. If they're, you know, if the funds cut off here after the top four, you know, these are what our priorities are. So I think if you still support it, I think leaving it on there would be good.
And maybe under self-sufficiency, is that what you're saying, or move it to basic needs?
The services and supports here?
Yes.
I would move it, I would move it up into the basic needs area.
When do we actually have this finalized? Today?
This week.
Yeah. Could you just kind of reword it, affordable quality housing, including services and supports to allow people to remain in their homes?
Okay, I can do that.
Including temporary transition housing and services and supports.
Yeah, just something to re, we were to just make it broad.
Mm-hmm.
And then we don't have an additional bullet.
Right.
Under number three, what is education and awareness mean?
Different topics that, you know, the agencies may train somebody on.
So it could be financial literacy.
It could be.
It could be, you know, it could be.
Could be diversity, you know, discrimination prevention.
Training on how to handle medications in your home.
Pretty broad.
Yeah.
I would, I would put upgrading employment skills and financial literacy ahead of it and keep it as other education and awareness is a catchall.
Yeah, okay.
But be in lower priority because it's some.
Okay. And then are you okay with the order? Let's see, you've got food security under basic needs, food security, housing, childcare. Was transportation next or medical?
What is the county, since we, well, it's got medical, dental. I question mental health being on the list since we're not funding mental health through assets.
Right, mental health should not be on the list.
Is that, is anybody disagreeing with me there?
No, but then the question is, do you take, keeping co-occurring care?
Some care for co-occurring disorders is paid for through mental health, some of it is substance abuse because it is co-occurring. If we take co-occurring off the list, I think we keep it, we inhibit the ability.
Sure.
To pay that substance abuse part of that co-occurring disorder treatment.
Okay.
So I would leave co-occurring and take out mental health.
And then I could have a line directly on the priorities that says that the county does not fund mental health.
Yeah, I would probably put something and say that that's funded through the region.
Yeah.
So that folks don't think that the county doesn't care about that.
Right.
It is funded, but it's funded through the region.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So what does access mean? Access to these services, what does that mean? Is there?
Helping them to get to those services.
So it doesn't necessarily mean funding for Mount Hall services?
Could be providing information, training, things like that.
Some may, yeah, might be information that goes for some folks, like primary healthcare. It could be, it could be that.
Some agencies have navigators, you know, public assistance navigators or something like that. I've seen some reference to that. Or just somebody, service coordination, for example.
So if we were to eliminate mental health here, would we be impacting those services?
If we eliminate?
If we were to cross mental health off of this access to medical, mental health substance use.
I think by just taking mental health out of here, period, it just eliminates confusion. You know, boys agencies getting confused about, well, if you don't fund it, why is it on here?
So it very specifically says, Story County funds mental health services through the CICS region.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And it also does, I mean, there is direct funding that goes to some of the agencies providing some of these services.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Access, for example.
So it's not just the navigators, it's actually the services.
Some, they have a service, some of them have a service that's specifically service coordination.
Sure.
And so that is, you know, getting clients to a number of different areas. But yeah, the county does fund those agencies. So co-occurring care, did you say you wanted to keep that or?
Keep it.
Avoid it, okay.
I wonder if the phrase access to it needs to be there. We don't say access to food and nutrition, access to transportation, et cetera. And if the access to.
Well, then does that mean you're paying for medical care? Are you paying for my medical bills?
Aren't we directly funding, like the dental clinic?
Yeah. And this miniature work, clearly what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I said, it's not just navigators that helps people get to the services. We're actually helping fund the services themselves. Correct? And county money goes directly, primary healthcare goes directly to the dental clinic.
So do you want to just take that out and put service coordination or something like that under basic needs?
That's not what I was saying, but I guess I'm not making myself very clear. Let's just leave it. It's not just service coordination, it's actually funding the services. It's not just somebody to help, you know, you get to here, it's actually that we are funding some, we are providing funding for the services, not, not the navigation, just the navigation of the access. That's what I was trying to say.
Right, so your question was, do you just take out the word access too?
Correct, that's what I was, that's what I was suggesting.
I see, yeah.
Thank you.
And is that what you were trying, thinking of before too, when you asked what access was?
I was, I was just trying to figure out what the intent of that was because what, I think with, like what you were getting at a minute ago, I don't want us to unintentionally cut someone off who's providing some service that fit here and now because we aren't including this word, right, you know, I don't want to do that. So let's just keep it clear.
If you want to take it out, that's fine. And I assume Sandra would come to us next year and say, okay, we need to, we need to clarify this, get this back in and clarify a little bit more here because now you've broadened it out even further or made it too strict.
Yeah, and when they do have questions about, does this fit under this priority, then they would contact me.
Okay. So do we have it? Do you need to have it?
Do you have what you need?
For that part, so you want me to take access to out, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so I did that. Do we have all the bullet points in the order that you want them in?
For one?
For all, for anything listed up there, any bullet point that's there.
I think we mentioned one, we have the two.
What's, what's written there? It's legal assistance, social and educational development opportunities, and access to emergency services.
And I believe you said, and then you want to move suicide prevention up into services addressing safety as the first one.
So I guess I'm confused, are we supporting legal assistance?
Yes, legal aid.
Legal aid.
We are?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I thought, I guess I thought they weren't getting funding anymore.
From CICS, I think.
So suicide prevention, I'm sorry, suicide prevention was the only one of these that was listed in the community assessment. So my sense is that we should put it first.
Right. And I still do need to get that clarity from Ethan on the suicide prevention, but there also, it could also fall under the education and awareness where there may be some training to prevent.
Right.
And if, yeah, he says no, that, I'm just trying to think who's open, you know, there are associations that deal with suicide prevention, I don't know if any of them are active in Story County now. Yeah, I think, I think that's right. If he says no, we, that needs to be considered in mental health, you could put it under education and awareness. So wouldn't we treat it in education? I would, I would go with that. So we under two or three, but. And then the third one, you added upgrading employment skills and financial literacy. Services and supports allowing people to remain in their homes went under one, housing. I think that's clear to have all the housing stuff together.
So under services addressing basic needs, we have food and nutrition, affordable quality housing, the combination of affordable quality housing and supports that'll help people stay in their homes, affordable quality childcare, medical, dental, substance abuse, and co-occurring care, and transportation, in that order.
I'm okay with that.
And then services addressing safety and wellbeing, we have suicide prevention. And then what is for as far as ordering.
And then we have, I think the ones that we have, I'd say leave those in the same order. And I don't see the, oh, I don't, maybe we should. No, I think that's okay.
And what does access to emergency services mean?
That's a good question. Does it mean access?
I think you could take it out and, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't do anything because when you take emergency services, you're going to go to basic needs anyway. If it's an emergency, it's probably going to be under that area already spelled out. So if you took it out.
Medical care, you need.
I think they would be.
Mental health, which would be, you've got your crisis hotline or whatever, which would fall under there. And how about, how about access to shelter? Or would you probably, at the end of your term?
Under housing, yeah.
Access is more than housing. Access is more than housing.
Right.
It deals with victims of crime who are not in a shelter. And I think we, I think.
Yeah, I mean, they provide counseling and financial education and. So would it be the education and awareness, wouldn't it?
No, it's more than that. It's, it's, it addresses, okay, access works with every victim to develop a safety plan for that victim. Access works with victims by going to court with them. Access does a whole lot of things that are simply past education. They are direct support to people who are victims of domestic and sexual violence. And I would include them under, under the access to emergency services, emergency and advocacy, victim advocacy services, potentially. I don't know what the emergency means, but I think.
Crisis, maybe, maybe it was an alternative to using crisis.
Could be.
Not every emergency is a crisis.
Mm-hmm. Could we add, could we rephrase it and access to emergency and victim advocacy services?
I think that would be good.
Okay. It's listed, okay.
And you give the suicide first, is that correct under number two? And I know you were going to ask Ethan on that. I don't know, just from my time at NAMI, that necessarily suicide alone is considered a mental health condition. It's usually a mental health condition may increase the likelihood for someone to complete suicide, but I don't think it was standalone, it necessarily. But there's a lot of back and forth on, yeah, on that particular topic.
I was just going to try to avoid the questions that I usually get from agencies. They'll say, well, can we do this? And it's, it's so close to the mental health line.
Right.
I just have to repeat that same sentence.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, great.
The more you talk, the more I think it goes under education and awareness.
Well, yeah, that, that may be what it is.
Except education and awareness is not one of the one, two, threes, it's a bullet under.
Except education and awareness is not one of the one, two, threes. It's a bullet under services promoting self-sufficiency. Well, you could have services, you could, you could services addressing safety and wellbeing, you could put suicide prevention or education and awareness. I mean, if you want to get that specific.
So is that where you want it, under the education and awareness?
I'm just throwing that out there to say under self, we already were putting under safety and wellbeing, suicide prevention. Do you need it more specific to say suicide prevention? You know, education and aware, education and awareness of suicide prevention. I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, we just put it under number two. As we've been talking, and our position is that it's something in addition to mental health. I think that's, I'm comfortable with it there.
That's fine. And if it's still an issue, Sandra will bring it back to us. We've left that, we've left it too broad.
Social and economic development and opportunities is the second bullet under number two. That's another pretty broad thing. Sandra, do you have any sense of what's kind of come under that?
Social and educational development opportunities. I'm blanking on that one unless, unless something with diversity could fit under this. I'm not sure specifically for that one.
Does anybody, do either of you have any sense of what fits under there or one you have there?
I mean, I guess like programming for kids who are on the autism spectrum is, that could fall in their.
Is that totally?
I mean.
Are there drop-in centers? Yeah, we do have All Board for Kids that could probably fit under there.
And you have, you have drop-in centers that, for the socialization and that provide educational opportunities as well.
I'll send you a draft before I post it anywhere to make sure that I have the rankings in the correct order. Okay.
All right. This does say discussion and consideration. Does that mean we can just leave it as discussion and direction, Shelley? Or do we?
Sandra needs it to go on by this Friday.
Right.
And I trust her notes on this, so I'm, I'm willing to make a motion that, excuse me. See how it's listed. I move that we approve the changes in the asset funded priorities for our discussion.
They moved in seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal? Headed aye.
And the additional item on revisiting the policy of not funding agencies that provide rent and utility assistance. So like Good Neighbor, for example, has always been one that the county didn't fund through asset. Is that one an agency that you would consider funding through asset for the future?
We have another agenda item that talks about some funding there. And I don't know how those two fit together.
So the, the upcoming agenda item addresses the immediate need. I think what Sandra's asking is funding.
Different funding source for that.
Different funding source and funding outside of this immediate need. Of which we right now, we were having folks go through our general assistance. And that's where we're allocating our funds versus opening it up and putting funds to other other entities.
Right. And some of the other agencies that provide rent and, and utility assistance, the board does fund for other things, like the Bridge Home, for example, or Salvation Army. But Good Neighbor, the board doesn't fund at all.
And what, what are our asset funds for the Bridge and Salvation Army? What do they use those funds for?
I know the, the Bridge Home provides emergency shelter services, rapid rehousing, service coordination.
So is, I guess, is Good Neighbor doing any of, any of those things that they could apply for funding for?
I would think they probably do some service coordination, although it may not be spelled out in that way. They have just not requested funding through the county because they know that the county doesn't fund.
Let me ask for some clarification. Exactly what are you asking us? Because it's, there's, it's not.
Well, I was just asking that during the pandemic, would the board consider revisiting that policy temporarily?
Why would we do that instead of increasing our general assistance funding if that was needed? Why wouldn't we do it through our normal?
General assistance has different guidelines, qualification guidelines.
I think they're just more, more restrictive. And my reason for bringing this forward is that I just thought that Good Neighbor could reach more people. But like you said, the $200,000 that is going to be considered later in this agenda is going to address providing some funding to Good Neighbor. So perhaps we can skip this and just look forward to that discussion.
I guess my concern. Yeah, we don't, yeah. I wouldn't be opposed to this, but I think I want more information, more time to think about it. See how the monies that we're able to use with rescue plan funding might help there. Because those are definitely there to mitigate the effects of the pandemic and housing is an issue there. And we know we have some monies there. So I guess my thought is if you're asking that we do this for during the pandemic, we have another source of funding available for housing needs caused by the pandemic. So why not look at that first rather than do something that would increase our need for funds for asset when we are approached by that? And if that doesn't work, we could come back to this. I can revisit. That would be, that would be, I thought.
Yeah, I would concur with that.
Okay.
Can I ask one question? So could we not increase our, the amount right now with the rescue dollars? Can we not increase the amount that we're making available through asset?
Through asset or through general assistance, through asset?
Well, I mean, general assistance to, but specifically to asset. And expand our definition of affordable housing or housing or include rent and utility assistance in there somehow. So that not just specifically Good Neighbor, but any of the agencies could then use their asset funding. Well, they could. Asset agencies have already started their fiscal year with what we supported already. So you'd be coming forward to us. Again, we would make that determination of as to what increase we would want for those asset agencies for next July.
Usually it's a constitution if there's a need. If the asset admin team determines if there's a need.
Right.
And I guess I would like to have, if there's a need, I would like to see the request and some data rather than just say, let's just put some more money here right now.
Well, it is a different time of year that I come forward with the budget. And so the budget discussion, I think that sometime in December that I would bring that forward, but that, that's not part of this discussion right here. And yes, they have already made their budget request for FY22. These would be for going forward. This would provide a direction for going forward. And so if you had approved that revisiting that policy, if you had approved that, you know, now those agencies would be funded for rent and utility assistance, I would just provide that guidance along with these funded priorities. But if it's not approved, I would just provide updated funded priorities and we would just stick with the same policy.
I get what you're saying. So when they go into the net budgeting timeframe in August, they would have that information of, oh, this was something we could potentially apply for.
Correct.
Kind of get my asset ahead on that.
And that's, I was thinking you were asking for something that would be effective in FY22, but you're talking about for the 23 budget side.
Right. For the next time we go into funding, yes, with the FY23.
Okay. And that's where I was confused. I thought it was to be immediate.
No.
And that does bring up, how long do the impacts of the pandemic last, you know, when you get on? And because we're talking about basically something that would be a year from now. Is there time for us to work with this in a few months?
You could, if you want me to bring it back.
If you see a need to.
For that discussion.
I'm giving.
If you see a need to, but as you mentioned earlier, that discussion about the $200,000 will come up later. And perhaps that would be a moving point after this. So. And then if there is a need with asset, then I would bring the request forward at that time.
And I think that if we approve that program we're talking about, that's going to give us some more data in terms of the need. Because we're kind of guessing the need right now. And if we put this program out there, that's going to give us more data. How was it used and when did it, you know, when did, when did, you know? I just think it uses more information to make an informed decision.
You're correct.
That's.
So in a month, we could say we want to add rent and utility to our priorities. Is that what, am I understanding that right? To our policy. This is where I look at it though, is you're going to have those asset agencies that will go to their mandatory meeting with their booklets and stuff in August, early mid-August. And they have to have their budgets in by the end of September on when they're going to fund. Now, some of them may have to go through the process through asset of a new service line if they're wanting to do this. Although Good Neighbor, I don't think that's what they already do. So I think that would be the question is if, if it is not in, if we don't change our policy now, it probably will be a whole nother year. Because they need to know as they're doing their budgeting.
And next month, we will be providing some training to agencies. So if the policy had been changed, then I would announce it at that time. If the policy has not changed, then I won't mention it.
Right. So I guess the question is, I think, at least for me, is, I think the county used to fund Good Neighbor or had money allocated so that they could be a recipient. Was that changed so that it was only through our general assistance and why? Why was it? I don't know. That's, that's what I, that's what I.
Okay. I don't, I don't know that it was funded in the past. I don't have that background information. But I do know that since I've been here, it has not been funded.
Okay. And I'm just wondering if it's because we already provide that.
Through general assistance, yes.
Through general assistance, that that's a reason of saying, oh, that's a duplication of.
Yes. And it wasn't just Good Neighbor. It was Salvation Army or the Bridge Home Salvation Army.
We'll fund others, other programs. Yeah, we'll fund their other programs.
Right.
But we, we're doing the general assistance.
Right.
Let me ask a question or let me make a suggestion. First, when would we have to know by in order for the, in terms of, and thanks for walking back with that. I was just thinking FY23. I wasn't thinking that whole long process that asset agencies go through. So when would we have to make a decision if we wanted to make this change?
Well, I come back to you in December to talk about funding allocation. You could do it at that time if you wanted to.
When are the agencies' applications due?
September, I believe.
I think it's like to be at the end of September usually.
So if we may say later in August, then we were to look at this. I'd be interested a little more in the history. And I was just going to suggest that the other, other folks that you, you serve on the asset admin team, that might be able to give you a little bit more history on that to bring back to us. Particularly Deb, but also Jean.
About Good Neighbor? And if they were ever funded by the county.
The history of why the county doesn't fund. And Carla might know as well. The history of why the county doesn't fund, because I haven't been here, you know, all those years either that they have been looking at.
I, I wanted back though, earlier in August, because you're going to want to be able to announce it if there were any changes at your, at the agency mandatory meeting. Which is generally mid-August.
Right, mid-August. It'll be around the 16th this year. But the information that I was provided is the information that I provided to you that the county does not fund rent utilities because it funds through general assistance. So are you requesting that I get some additional background in terms of whether the county has ever funded other agencies for rent and utility assistance or what exactly is your question?
Yeah. Was this a change? And if so, why was the, why did the change occur?
Okay. And if it wasn't a change, then we know that this was just always the policy.
Okay.
Yeah. Because that, yeah, we brought back at another meeting of consideration if we find out how, yeah, it was changed like eight years ago, the reason why. Does that help? For today? Okay. That's great. Great. Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next. Joby? Morning. Still morning.
Yes.
Is it? Yeah.
Just a little after 11:00. All right. Got a bid award recommendation for our Justice Center HVAC equipment replacement project. Last week, we opened bids. We had three experienced and competent general contractors that submitted us bids. Birdstrom Construction out of Des Moines was $1,505,000. Herald Bike Construction out of Ames was $1,240,000. Lang Construction Group out of Grimes was $1,667,600. We were able to have a conference call with Curtis Pike of Herald Bike Construction last Tuesday after the board meeting to discuss who they would use for subcontractors and all that. And got references on their subs. Everybody, all their subs look competent and comfortable with their bid price. So my recommendation is to award the bid to Herald Bike Construction for 1.24 million, which is under our budget at 1.33 million for the project. So.
Was this price?
Yes, very much so. That'd be my recommendation. And if you choose to award the bid, then we would work with the county attorney's office to draft contracts. Get the project moving forward. It's, looks like it's going to take about a year to get completed. So. Questions for me?
You just answered my question.
Yeah, they were all 48 to 52 weeks. So a lot of that is equipment lead time.
Questions? Their motion?
I would move we award the bid to Herald Bike Construction for Justice Center HVAC Equipment Replacement Faces 2 and 3 for $1,240,000.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Headed aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joby.
Next is the discussion and consideration of Resolution 2209, Riggins Family Farm Residential Parcel, Parcel Subdivision. Morning, Andrea.
Morning, Andrea. Powerpoint to get pulled up. I didn't recognize any of the names on the Zoom call as neighboring property owner, but it might be somebody that we said, no, it's two. All right. So we received another application for residential parcel subdivision, named the Riggins Family Farm Parcel Subdivision. And the applicant was Denton Davis &amp; Brown Law Firm, representing the property owner and their granddaughter. So located in Indian Creek Township, Section 7, under the following districts. Next slide. Locations, you can see again, Indian Creek Township, just a bit north of Maxwell, off of 295th Street. This is the subject property and its current configuration. It is an entire quarter-quarter, the northwest and southeast of Section 7. As you can see, there is a dwelling, some accessory structures. Approximately more than half of it is currently in pasture on the left-hand side. And then on the right-hand side, it is currently in row crop production. Next slide, please. This is the proposed division. So it is that entire quarter-quarter section. Lot 1 is up there at the top. It's just a little bit over one net acre. That would be a new buildable lot for a dwelling. And that is in the area that is currently in row crop. And then on the left-hand side, everything would remain the same. They would still have the existing dwelling farm structures and then the pasture area. And then everything south into the east of Lot 1 would still be in row crop as well. So Lot 1, again, just a little bit over one net acre. There could be a dwelling established on that lot in the future. And then the remaining, remainder of Lot 2 is over 37 net acres. And again, it has pasture and row crop. Lot 2 has an existing access point. Lot 1 would need to get an access permit if development occurs on that lot. Next slide, please. Surrounding land use. As you can see, everything around it is zoned A1 agricultural. There are 22 parcels located within a quarter-mile. Of those, just two other properties contain single-family dwellings. And then 19 of those parcels meet or exceed the minimum 35 acres needed to build a dwelling on the property, according to our current land use regulations. Next slide, please. These are applicable regulations from Chapter 87 for the residential subdivision process. I'm sure you guys have seen these before. If you have any questions about them, I can answer them, but we can go on. This application did meet all of those regulations. On July 20th, so last week, notification letters were mailed to property owners within a quarter-mile of the subject property. As of today, we haven't received any comments or questions from any neighboring property owners. There are no cities within two miles. It is further than two miles from Maxwell. So we did not notice any cities either. So the analysis here points to considering that we considered in our recommendation, there is plans to develop Lot 1 in the future. This creates just one additional buildable lot. We've heard from the property owner's granddaughter that they intend to build a home on Lot 1 in the future and have two generations on that farm. Because currently, it is just the property owner's children living in the house on proposed Lot 2. As I mentioned, it's already an existing dwelling on Lot 2. Access exists. It meets all of our development regulations in Chapter 87. And then of the 22 parcels in the quarter-mile radius, just two contain single-family dwellings. So this would be substantially altering the character of the locality. And then additional divisions would not be allowed without a rezoning of the parcels. Next slide. So our recommendation would be to follow alternative number one for the board supervisors to approve Resolution Number 22-09, the Riggins Family Farm Residential Parcel Subdivision, as submitted by the applicant. Alternatives would be to approve it with conditions or if you had some modifications for it, to deny the resolution, or to table it and direct the applicant or staff to gather more information about the subdivision. So if there are any questions, I can answer those. Questions?
I love that we approve Resolution 2209 for Riggins Family Farm Residential Parcel Subdivision as presented this minute.
It's been moved in second to Markin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Hedin's aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next one, the discussion and consideration for funding of $200,000 and draft memorandum for the emergency rent and utility assistance.
So at our work session last week, one of the things that was talked about was the possibility of emergency or immediate rent and utility assistance in response to the end of the eviction moratorium at the end of this month, and the possibility of making some funds available. So what Sandra and I did was put together a memorandum of understanding. The proposal would be to make funds available to the, I don't know why I have such a hard time remembering this word. The partners. Centralized. Centralized, yeah. Thank you. Partners. Since they're already working with community services to assist people with rent and utility assistance, just making these funds available for those agencies to apply for in, in response to the pandemic and eviction moratorium ending. I did forward the MOU and, did not forward the, the application to Ethan, but I did forward the MOU to Ethan. He made one small change to item five, adding payee to amount paid, to payee. I didn't have that before we got this up on the agenda. That was the only change that he recommended, was just an additional word. Am I right about that? Okay. Yeah, do you want to, do you want to look at it, or should I read it? The changes.
Go for the changes.
So I, and Section 2, for prevention of eviction, funds may be used for current and/or next month's rent and pass to utilities. If not possible, to prevent, add a pending eviction, comma. And then in item five, he struck at least, changed it to provider will submit A instead of at least monthly, and struck A after monthly. So it would say provider will submit monthly, comma, report to include each recipient's household size and demographics, new or existing client, category of use, amount paid. And then he added the payee and a copy of paid receipt or invoice. Those are the only recommended changes. What we, what Sandra and I talked about originally was having, setting a five, a $50,000 application max. But then we were concerned that maybe that would bump up against some RFP requirement possibly. We couldn't remember exactly what was talked about in the work session. So we brought that down to 25,000. But I, or line six states additional applications would be accepted.
I had a question between six and seven, if I might. And it said would be accepted through September 30th, 2021, or until fully awarded. I wanted to know, is it whichever is sooner or whichever is later? And how that fit with eight or seven termination, that the agreement should remain in full force and effect until the award amount has been fully expended? I thought those three things, I, I was confused.
Uh huh.
And I thought anybody would be confused. I, that's. So is it September 30th? Or is it until fully awarded, even if that's five years from now? See?
Yes.
Where my concern was.
So the intent was applications will only be accepted through September 30th because this is in response to this immediate need.
Can we take out or?
But the reason I added the, or until fully, fully awarded is I was trying to avoid someone thinking that they could turn in an application up until September 30th and expect that it would be funded. So.
So I guess it leads to my question is, because it says you've got $200,000. Agencies could apply up to 25.
Each application.
Right, right. Yeah, and I had to reread that a couple times to make sure it was meaning each. You kind of identified three of them. So that comes up to $75,000, but you'd have 125,000 left. So are you kind of thinking, saying like, for this round, applications will be accepted through September 30th? And then are you going to have another round for an application? I guess that was a little bit of my confusion.
What's going to happen with the other 125,000?
Yeah.
Well, so if an agency applies for that 25,000, they spend it all. They can apply again if it's not before September 30th. So they can keep.
If it's before September 30th.
If it's before September 30th. Because we, I mean.
So they can apply more than once, and then each time they can apply for 25,000, but the final date is September 30th?
Yes.
It is September 30th the final date for an applicant to apply for 25,000, or the final date for a person who needs assistance to get assistance?
I need you to ask that again. I didn't realize you were asking me a question.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Additional applications will be accepted through September 30th. Are you talking about applications from the agency?
Yes.
Okay. So then the agency would have until when to get that, that out to individuals? I think, I think applicant confused me.
Okay.
Because I was thinking applicant could be the agency or applicant could be the individual needing, needs.
So, and it doesn't say applicant. It just says additional applications will be accepted.
I. Right. And I guess what, what confused me a little bit, too, is it's saying additional applications. So what about, that's why I took it as kind of that second round. Are you meaning to say applications will be accepted through September 30th? Because by the time you get it out, are they going to have the, all of August and September to, to seek those funds? And then, then when you're saying or until fully rewarded, that, I guess that's where my, because if your applications could be accepted through September 31st, I may be on vacation. I may not write that till mid-September. And then get whatever, whenever I'm going to be awarded. But I can only go up to 25,000. So then am I out? I've only asked for 25,000 and I'm out and I could use more come October? Am I no longer able to? That's what I was trying to figure out. Are you looking at one round or two?
As many rounds as they.
Right. But you've got a date of September 31st of asking for funding. Is that the only date they can ask for funding by?
No. It's just the last date that they can ask for funding.
So when's the first date? I mean, when do you want that? So, so, so when, when I'm applying, I need to know the date that the, it's becoming available? And when do I need to have my application in by? And then if I could seek for additional funding, I need kind of that information. But is there a deadline that I should get in to get that first 25,000? Do you hear what I'm saying?
Yes. So item nine says effective date of MOU upon approval and signature of both parties, they will become effective immediately.
But they need to apply. So there's some sort of process for them to apply to the funds?
Is there a process?
Yeah. My question is, when is that due by?
I think it's ongoing.
Yes.
So my sense of it was that it's ongoing. You can apply as soon as you possibly can. As long as you're for the 25. Once you've expended that, you can apply for another 25. And it's a really simple application form. So it's not like anybody's going to have to do anything other than put their, you know, their contact information.
Right. Because they're already, they're already the, one of the intake partners.
Yes.
So, and this is only for one of those three agencies that are already part of centralized intake. So the thought with the very, very simple application is just make it something so that it's as easy and quick as possible for them to get another application turned in. The, the place, the, the thing I was unsure about was the requirement that their initial 25,000 be completely spent before they apply again. I was a little concerned that maybe that would be putting up a barrier or, you know, making things complicated. Oh, well, do I have to make sure every single dollar is spent before I can turn in this application? Or?
Okay. And on number three, what if you changed that to say, provider may apply for additional funding if available once, once 80% of the initial award is exhausted.
Yeah, that way they're not totally to zero.
Right.
Because then they have 20%, they have 5,000 left, which may not be a lot.
Yeah, I like that.
And then under five and six, I'm going to suggest you take out or until fully awarded because I think that is confusing. And I think the, the first sentence, or six and seven, excuse me. I think the first sentence in seven, this agreement should remain in effect until the award amount has been fully expended. What if they don't fully expend it by September 30th? They have to return it, correct?
No.
When do they have to have it fully expended?
The, the intent was not that they return anything if they don't have it spent by, by a date. Like, it needs to be used for emergency rent.
Okay.
Or utilities.
Certainly tie it to the fiscal year.
Sure. Sure.
Started by June 30. No later than, but no later than June 30, 2022.
So this agreement should remain in full force and effect until the award amount has been fully expended or?
But no later than June 30, 2022. Because we don't want to say, you know, we don't want to be tracking a program for 10 years or 11 years or 12 years, I would think.
One, yeah. I think it also depends on your funding source, too. Is do one, does it need to be expended by?
Our county funds, in which case it's good to tie it to a fiscal year. And since we're, that's where we're doing it from now. And your, your, your cover memo said a maximum of 2,000 to 2,500 per household. But I assume you're proposing 2,000 because that's what's in your documents.
That's, that's what, that's what I was proposing. That's what I was proposing because that's what, that was one of the things that was discussed in the work session. I then had a couple conversations with some providers and I said, what do you think about this amount? And the response was $2,000 to $2,500, sounds reasonable. So I did want to raise that question to you guys today and just kind of get your thoughts on that. I think $2,000 is going to help people. I didn't know if we wanted to bump that up a little bit. I mean, it's like if we bump it up a little bit, then we help fewer people, but if we're really are helping people in a way that they don't have to then go someplace else to look for assistance also. So I just wanted to talk to you guys about that, get your thoughts.
The back of the envelope, Matt, we did in our work session, basically, I think indicated that $2,000 would probably do a motel for a month if they're, you know, with good rates they had before. Or would you grant assistance at something like $700 a month? I think the well card in there is if people are having to pay back utilities. But hopefully, they can, if they had some money, they can make some arrangements and kind of build something down on it.
Yeah. You know, I think the other thing too is, I'm looking at $2,000 as well. You can also find out from the providers, is that meeting the need? And if there needs to be, you know, do you need to amend for the next destination to say, oh, no, really, it should be $2,500? Because what they're visually noticing is $2,000 is not.
And the other thing that might run into is that there may be fewer people than within apply for it, but they may need an additional month of assistance. And I'm certainly willing to, if we get more information back from providers that say, good idea, guys, but here's some tweaking that could be done that could really help some folks, I'm willing to do that later. I'm just want, you know, you're, and you've done a really good job of saying, you know, if we're going to do, you know, help the people who may get evicted August 1st, maybe out there, we've got to get this going now. I think we've got something that you and Sandra did some great work, we get something going and I'm, you know, glad you have, did all the work you did with the service providers.
Sandra's amazing. Amazing.
Sure. So I.
And is this something that's going to get emailed out to those agencies right away so that they?
Yes, we have an opportunity to look at it and get it completely turned back in as quickly as possible. I did email them all this morning just to give them a heads up. Jovi's on, yeah, I see Jovi. Just to let them know we'd be talking about this today. So, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. So then the funding coming from general county betterment funds, is that acceptable to you guys as well?
Just general funds.
General funds.
You're saying general funds?
Kind of better, so.
The overall, yeah.
General funds.
And as Ms. Markley stated, it can be, if we are comfortable with rest of plan guidance, we can go over to that.
Correct.
My turn.
So I move approval of funding of $200,000 from the general fund for emergency rent and utility assistance to prevent homelessness in response to the expiration of the eviction moratorium and the negative economic impacts of COVID-19.
Second motion.
It's been moved in seconded. Basil, aye. Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Great work. Next, we'll move on to departmental reports. Animal Control.
Good morning. Almost over. No copy tomorrow. All right, just a few highlights I wanted to go over with you guys. As I had mentioned in my last quarter of the report, we would see an uptick in animal intakes, especially with kittens. So last quarter, the shelter took in a total of 103 cats and kittens, in 43 dogs and puppies. And then we had a total of 73 animals adopted. 20 were transferred to another shelter or rescue, and 24 were returned to their owners. Animal control calls also saw an increase. We responded to 57 animal control calls, most of those being stray animal pickups. Others included nuisance complaints, welfare checks, and animal bites. In April, we received our foster oversight approval from the Iowa Department of Agriculture. We have about 18 animals currently in foster care. This includes hospice care, neonatal kittens that need bottle fed and given supportive care 24 hours a day, as well as animals that need a break from the shelter environment and extra socializing. A fundraiser was held for our shelter the end of June, and this dedicated group of people were able to raise $5,275 for our shelter. Currently, we are eagerly waiting for our new flooring and kennels to be installed, which will begin in August with a tentative completion date of August 27th. And we are continuing to develop our volunteer program and looking at ways to involve a younger crowd at animal welfare. And then just one last thing, the current animal population as of last Thursday, July 22nd, was 87 cats and kittens, five dogs, and two guinea pigs. Any questions?
A lot of cats.
Yeah.
Take some off your hands, my chew would even matter.
Spread the word.
I keep liking your sharing your Facebook page, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have any questions? Any other questions? Great, thanks, Anna.
Great news, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any other reports, upcoming agenda items. I don't have any of those.
We will be looking this afternoon just for discussion on the workforce retraining initiative and depending on how that goes, we may have to see that on the agenda for next Tuesday, some of the rest of the plan, potential. So that's the only thing I'm thinking of right now.
Next, we'll move on to public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. So anyone who'd like to make public comment, they're online, they just need to unmute themselves, star nine. Wait four seconds, like how sometimes it gets a little glitchy. Right, not saying anyone, but those public forum number two, liaison assignments, committee meetings, updates.
Sure. Earlier this year, I remember talking to somebody and agreeing to be on some committee, and I've been trying to think what that was for a long time. And then I got this email the other day that I'm on the state's vertical infrastructure committee.
I actually remember then you applying or someone asking you on that.
Yeah.
But I did not remember it till you.
What it was, I did. But it's something to do with DOT, and I've actually been to one meeting in a previous existence of the vertical infrastructure committee, and I'm in Story County and they meet at the DOT, so I think that's why I was asked. But I'm looking forward to that, that's learning something new. One o'clock tomorrow is the first meeting. Let's see. I may go to Star City for the urban renewal meeting Thursday, it's on my calendar, see how things go. There's a workshop or webinar in the afternoon, buy it at OCIO. Did any of me get that? Maybe I got it because of the broadband study. The office, the chief information officer has some kind of a program where our county or local jurisdiction can buy $9,500 worth of some kind of technology to assist people.
Yeah.
I have no idea what it is, but I did sign up to be on that Thursday at 1:30. So we'll see if that's anything that we can take advantage of. Some of the professional development seminar work also Thursday and Friday. Gilbert Days is evidently coming up this weekend. No parade, but a lot of fun. And that might be, oh, we have a youth conference board meeting this hot tonight, don't worry.
Yep.
Okay. I think that's all, other than Sweet Corn and Blundy, Feed and McCallsburg on Monday. Lions. Don't you have that on your calendar?
I don't.
Good heavens. Well, it's, I think it's at 5 o'clock at the McCallsburg Lions Club. You might want to double check just on the calendar for a while. So that's, that's what I've got.
Yeah, I've got the special conference board meeting tonight, our work session this afternoon. There's a webinar that I signed up for, I'm not sure when, but about on microtransit that starts at 12:00 today.
Really?
Yeah. And then there's a strategic planning retreat for the Iowa Council on Homelessness tomorrow, which goes pretty much all morning. And then I've got a Center for Creative Justice Board meeting Wednesday night, CFR meeting Thursday night, and then I will be out on Friday. So I have the youth conference board tonight as well. I think we have our work group meeting tomorrow. I have the NACO meeting on Thursday. Friday, I now have the McCallsburg thing on my calendar, although I may have another meeting that night. I am trying to actually coordinate. Monday, I'm sorry.
Okay.
What did I say?
Friday.
Oh, okay, sorry. Let's say Monday. I, we're playing a little phone tag and emailing back and forth to go up to Roland and to McCallsburg to meet and talk to them. So I may be out part of the days this week, or they gave me some time, so they just, that's it, we're just trying to get those all coordinated up.
Great.
So that's, that's my plan. Otherwise, nothing else. Anything else for today?
All right, motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's?
Aye.
We are adjourned.